Item number 16 is the consideration for approval of the final map, the subdivision improvement agreement, and the affordable housing regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants, also known as the BMR agreement for Westport Cupertino development project, along with the other information provided in the agenda item number 16 for our meeting tonight. I believe that we have from staff, a couple of people from our public works department, as well as planning. Chad, I see that you're up. Are you presenting from the staff presentation on this?
Yes, I am.
All right. Take it away.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Chad Mosley. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works and City Engineer. And the subject of this item for Westport Cupertino development project is the final map, the subdivision improvement agreement, and the affordable housing regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants, basically called the BMR agreements. The project is located at the northwest corner of Stevens Creek Boulevard and Mary Avenue, just east of Highway 85. The final map is comprised of a three lot subdivision for condominium purposes of up to 88 residential units, which are located on parcel A only. On September 7th, City Council approved a vesting tentative map to facilitate development of 88 townhomes, row homes, 48 BMR senior residential units, 131 senior residential units, and mixed retail uses. Staff has reviewed the map and determined it to be substantially compliant to the approved tentative map in that it conforms to the requirements of the subdivision map act. Per muni codes and government code, the approval is a ministerial act. Therefore, the final map must be approved if it is substantially conforms to the tentative map. As part of the final map approval, the city clerk will accept on behalf of the city council the roadway dedication and easements necessary to accommodate the approved use of the project, including a pedestrian and bicycle access easement connecting Mary Avenue to Stevens Creek along the westward portion of the property. The map also abandons redundant roadway and drainage easements. The proposed roadway dedication and fee title will encompass, preserve, and protect any public utilities within the area. The subdivision improvement agreement and associated improvement plans cover the furnished improvements conditioned as part of the tentative map. The improvements include installation of a protected bike lane along the north side of Stevens Creek Boulevard between Mary Avenue and Highway 85, a new Center Island gateway sign, new sidewalks, driveways, utility connections for the project, landscaping along Stevens Creek Boulevard, which is consistent with the heart of the city's specific plan, modifications to the existing crosswalk on Mary Avenue, which include enhanced visibility and rapid flashing beacons, relocation of the existing VTA bus stop from east side of Stevens Creek Boulevard and Mary Avenue intersection to the west side in front of the project. With city council approval, the city engineer is authorized to execute and record the subdivision improvement agreement. The BMR agreement sets the income eligibility requirements, maximum rents, and lease terms for the 48 below market rate units and is consistent with the city's policy and procedures manual for administering deed restricted affordable housing units adopted by the city, with an exception to accommodate the applicant's desire to seek financing from the federal low income housing tax credit program. The city's BMR manual requires annual certification for tenants' eligibility from BMR housing, but the federal tax credit program prohibits evicting a tenant under those circumstances. In order to preserve the ability to qualify for federal financing, the BMR agreement includes language indicating the federal rules will govern in the event of a conflict. With city council approval, including this provision, the city manager would be authorized to execute and record this agreement. Pursuant to Cupertino municipal code, the applicant has provided security bonds for the completion of the various street improvements and has paid various city fees, with the exception of the park land dedication and lieu fees. The applicant has requested the park fees be deferred till after the final map recordation or until December 31st, whichever is sooner. Actually, I take that back. It'll be after the final map recordation. It'll be either until December 31st or till the closing of any property transfer, whichever occurs first. The applicant explained some project funding is contingent upon the recordation of the final map. And furthermore, the applicant indicated the final map must be filed with the county soon after city council's approval in order for the builder of the BMR units to have a separate parcel, which is required to close a transaction of their financing. So basically, that's the conclusion of the presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Chad. I appreciate you being brief here. We will go ahead to members of the public before bringing it back to council for questions of staff and your presentation. I see that a couple of people have their hands raised at this point. We have Peggy Griffin, as well as Jennifer Griffin. And so same guidelines apply as long as Peggy's still speaking. As the first speaker, you have time to raise your hand and be called on for this item. As soon as Peggy has concluded, you'll need to have your hand raised, or else you won't be called on here. And so, welcome Peggy. You'll have the full three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, council members, and staff. In regards to the VTA bus stop, during the project review, several people spoke against having that bus stop in front of Westport because you've got the senior center and you've got the Deansah students. And the Deansah students cross Stevens Creek, one cross. And the senior center, that supports all of Cupertino and some of other cities, use that bus stop. And you're moving the bus stop so that this particular project can benefit. And you're forcing seniors from the senior center and also from Deansah to do two crossings just so that this particular project can have the bus stop. Also, it's not as safe. You've got cars turning right from Mary Avenue, and you've got a bus pulling in and out. The safest place for that bus stop is in front of the senior center where it currently exists. And I don't understand why there wasn't some discussion about that when you guys said you would be looking into it later. And now, all of a sudden, it's a done deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin. We also have Lisa Warren and San R. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. And I just had a couple of questions about the project. I noticed they did the demolition over the weekend. We drove past it several times. I will tell you, I was very sad to see it go down. And God knows the oaks inside, but I won't go there. Anyway, why are the, in terms of the BMR units, why are they not following Cupertino's guidelines for our BMR program? Why did they see fit to have something go to a federal level? Also, why are these BMR units, have they been released to Cupertino to be part of our BMR units? I don't understand. When we have BMR units, we need to add to Cupertino's stock of BMR units. I don't like the fact that we are subsidizing, I'm not going to say subsidizing. I think that BMR units in places like this, this is a large residential development, that they should be released to the city to be part of our BMR program. And I don't understand why that was not done in this case. I don't understand the federal part of this. I also hope that these units can never be sold. You know, it's not like 20, 30, 40, 50 years, and then they return to market rate. We need to have dedicated BMR units, and we don't need to have anyone making profits off of these in 20 to 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I'll just echo Peggy because there was a lot of discussion about that bus stop. And I don't understand, in addition to putting it in a place that is less desirable, the expense to do so. So I also question that. And I don't know if all the bike path situations have been resolved and the promises for bike paths, or at least a bike route. I'm sorry I had to dip out to do something else for a minute, and I may have missed Chad talking about that. But I wouldn't be surprised if it didn't get addressed, if the bus stop also did not. So please discuss that.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next and final public speaker on this agenda item is San R. Welcome, San.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to echo the earlier speakers that the section where the bus stop is being moved is an area of high congestion as traffic starts to merge towards the 85 northbound entryway. And I request the city council to ensure that a traffic study is done on the impact of these changes and we avoid causing any more traffic congestion in this area. I also want to second the earlier comment about the sad loss of a number of oak trees from that property. And I request the city council to ensure that oak trees are replaced, to the extent they can be, as a part of the plan for the development. And finally, I'd be curious why we'd want to support the wave of the parkland fees, which I think is to the tune of about 9.2 million, as I can see in the doc here. I'd be curious why we'd want to waive that and let that revenue lapse from the city. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And with that, we'll bring it back to council. Would anyone have any questions for staff? I note that the applicant, I believe, is also present. I see Councilmember Moore. Has her hand raised, Councilmember Moore?
Yes, I believe the bus stop situation was addressed during the discussion for the tentative map, and I was wondering if we could hear about that again. And it sounds as though, from looking at the staff report, that you planned the installation of flashing lights on Mary. So I was wondering if Chad could repeat the information about why the bus stop would be located there and why, for what, you know, what are the good positive benefits of having it at that location that we're going to see?
With respect to the bus stop, VTA explicitly asked for the bus stop to be situated on the west side of the intersection. Part of that is to facilitate their operations and the ease of them providing services for residents. There are a couple of other aspects to it, but this is not, it wasn't that it was ignored. This was requested specifically by the Transit Authority. With respect to the crosswalk on Mary Avenue, right now, it's just a mid-block crossing. We are looking to put in rapid flashing, pedestrian-actuated rapid flashing beacons to allow for pedestrians to be more visible, or at least to alert drivers of pedestrians in the crosswalk.
I'm sorry, Chad. So this is, is this at Stevens Creek and Mary? Or is this at the bend in the curve into the parking area? That's where it's located? Okay.
Yeah, the pedestrian-actuated rapid flashing beacons are going to be at the curve area.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's certainly necessary because people start accelerating right around that bend. Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next, we have Councilmember Willie, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, I'm kind of wondering also, like the residents concerned, thinking that, you know, I feel a little bit better if we had some input from the planning commission pertaining to the bus. Yeah, VTA may want it to be in a different place than it is now, but what do our residents and community want? And so I think, you know, the planning commission should be looking at that from the community standpoint. For the BMR, I would also say something similar. Has the housing commission looked at these changes that the federal government? Yeah, the developer wants, the developer wants to go and get the most money that he can in that regard. But I think we have a housing commission that would be looking at it from the community standpoint. Can you, did either commission get the seeder?
I can answer with respect to the bus stop. There are other reasons. There are safety reasons for relocating it to the west side. It's not just VTA's request. By placing the bus stop on the west side, you're minimizing a potential visual obstruction. Considering somebody at the east leg of the intersection, if the bus was located there, people coming around the bus have a harder time seeing pedestrians that may be trying to cross that intersection. There are legitimate safety concerns with this, not just VTA's request. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, but I believe this project did go to the planning commission.
Yeah, Chad, it did. And we have Joe Matur here, the project manager for the project, that took the item to the planning commission. So if there are any specific items, questions on that, we can certainly answer that, that they go to the planning commission.
Yeah, I think, you know, it would be real good if you presented, you know, if the, if the planning commission reviewed it and with their, with their understanding, they like, they support, us then have that also in our consideration. But if we're not told that they reviewed it, that they didn't have concerns, or if they did, if they did have concerns, were there any concerns by the planning commission when they reviewed it?
And I should state, we're just talking about the final map here. Design concerns with the tentative map were taken to the planning commission, and those were also presented to council back in September. This is just for approval of the final map. We're not getting into design issues. I just, I kind of wanted to make that clear. This was all presented, and with the approval of the tentative map, we did present that the planning commission had approved it at that point.
Yeah, if I may, Councilmember Willie, I'll try to clarify and add to Chad's comments. So what's being presented to council is approval of the final map. And so, to the extent the final map conforms with the tentative map, you know, that is a ministerial decision, and, you know, there is not discretion to approve it. There are two issues that are being presented for council's consideration here. One is the deferral of the payment of the parkland fees. So not a waiver, but a deferral, which is requested by the developer to accommodate their financing, as Chad described in his presentation. The other is a relatively minor modification to our form BMR agreement to accommodate the developer's request to seek low income housing tax credit financing, which is common. And, you know, those modifications, I think, would be consistent with standard practice in many jurisdictions. So, but just to clarify, those are what I would characterize as more discretionary things that council could consider here. But the elements of project design, to the extent they're consistent with the tentative map that has already been approved by planning commission and then has also been approved by council, there is not discretion to reconsider those issues at this time.
Yeah, well, I do think we need to be aware of, you know, that not one, not two, but three residents apparently think that, you know, the suggestions were made and not sufficiently covered. I do remember we talked about the bus stop and stuff, but we cover so many things for all of us. So I really do listen to the residents. And what we were hearing from them is that they really raised this issue. And so if we can't do anything about it this time, I would think that, I would hope we were learning from it. For the BMR, likewise, you know, having a statement, something from the housing commission that said that they did look at it, that, I mean, this is what it would probably wind up being, that they said that they did look at it, and the pros outnumber the cons to getting, you know, the affordable units, you know, in work. But again, we have these commissions. If we're not going to utilize the commissions to, you know, for the purpose that we've created them, then I'm disappointed. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Let's go to Vice Mayor Chow.
Hi. So I support the delay allowing them to pay the park fee end of the year. However, the, making the exception for the BMR menu, I do think that the housing commission, who is the commission, BMR should be allowed to come in because this creates an inequity situation in Cupertino. Some, most of the units will have to, everyone have to do a new certification for income. And then for this one unit, they just need to qualify for one year, and then they get to occupy the unit for 55 years, even when their income goes up. That doesn't seem to be equitable for the rest of people who need low income housing. So I wonder whether they have considered that. And also, this developer only says they have the desire to apply for this program. They may or may not apply. Even if they apply, they may or may not qualify. But then we are giving them this exception, no matter what. I wonder if we can give it a conditional exception, in condition, in case they get this grant. Maybe we could grant that. But still, that still creates an inequitable situation in Cupertino that I think housing commission at least should be informed about this inequitable situation that maybe other people will sue us all. Who knows? And then I...
Chris?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I could clarify that the exception is conditional. So they are, the applicant is intending to seek LITHC financing. If they receive it, then, you know, the request would be to modify the city's BMR rules to allow them to obtain that financing. As to the effect of allowing or disallowing that financing on the project, I believe representatives from the project team are at the meeting, and they are probably better placed than anybody on staff to speak to, you know, what impact that may have on the project moving forward.
Well, that did sound like an invitation. Did anyone want to turn on a camera and speak to our city attorney's comment a moment ago? If not, we'll turn it back to the vice mayor to conclude our comments.
So could you confirm that this is conditional? Because it doesn't sound that way from the staff report. And the agreement is very hard to read. So could we confirm that this is, the exception would be made only if they received the grant from that program?
Yeah, that's, I believe that's correct, Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, thank you. And I saw last time they are subdividing into two lots. But it's three lots now, or I remembered it wrong? Or it was already two that, one of them are subdivided into two, so it's a total of three? Right?
Correct. The current lot is already two parcels, and this is creating a third.
A third, okay. The VTA bus issue, I think people have questions. And I am also still confused with the answer. So if it is requested by the VTA, I assume there is a letter that clearly states the reason this is necessary, why is that safer? So can we provide that letter from VTA and maybe more written clarification on why this move, even without this project, that move is something VTA would recommend and why? And then I think then people will not feel like this is favoring one project. So could we get this written letter of request from VTA? And written...
Chad, if you're speaking, you'll need to unmute your microphone.
I'll track down the information where VTA made this request, and we'll provide the engineering reasons for the relocation to the west side.
Yeah, if we post that on the website, I think many people who have concern can read. I know sometimes we hear an information once, we forget. So it's good to have something written. And in terms of bike lane, I thank you, Mark Tercini, for providing the separated bike way for that section of Stevens Creek. Really appreciated. I remember there was also a bike lane along 85, so do we still have that? Could you clarify that? Or was, I kind of remember we still, I think they were still providing the bike lanes through the property from north to south.
That is, that is correct. Those bike lanes are still there. They're providing easements on the map for those facilities.
But only easement, not construction, right?
Well, the easements are being, yeah, this is for the final map. Those easements are being provided, and they will be constructed with the project as the project moves forward.
So it will be constructed too?
Correct.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Way.
So I just want to make a short comment. I'm pretty sure the, well, we like to, it's very good that we hear the reasons why the bus stop is being relocated. But I want to make it clear, I just, this is my impression. We're not, we're not moving the bus. There must be a reason to move it, and we're not benefiting the project or the developer. We're going to benefit the 80 row homes, the 48 senior affordable housing, 180 senior apartments. They're going to be our residents. So I want to say, whatever we do, we're going to benefit our future residents. It's really not for the developer. I'm hoping that we are working to benefit future residents, so that will be my comment.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Before we go back for any further discussion, I am going to move the recommended action, and I'll ask for a follow-up from staff as well on top of that motion. The recommended action is to, I move that we adopt resolution number 21-109, one, approving the final map; two, accepting the street dedication and public service easements and abandoning redundant public roadway and drainage easements as shown on the map; three, authorizing the city engineer to execute and record the subdivision improvement agreement; four, authorizing the city manager to execute and record the affordable housing regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants, also known as the BMR agreement; and finally, five, consider a request for deferral of payment for parkland dedication and lieu fees. On top of that recommended action, I'd like to, I'd like to motion that we provide staff direction to investigate the usage of that bus stop by the members of the senior center and to report back to council any kinds of measures that we can take to help ensure the safety of the usage of the new location of the bus stop by people that utilize the senior center. So I think the general concern is that we have an elderly population that is more used to possibly utilizing that bus stop close by to the structure. And now, there is a crossing of Mary Avenue and Stevens Creek Boulevard. So just to come back to us with some information, I would be... So um, just to come back to us with some information, um, I, I, I would be interested in knowing how many. Um, members of that senior center uh a- actually use the buses. Um, but at the same time, you know, given that information, perhaps we can um think creatively about what can be done to. Help uh ensure the safety of, 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 of the people utilizing that facility. So that's my motion. Uh, would anyone like to second? I see Councilmember Moore with a hand raised.
Uh, yes, I, I second that. Uh, I, you, you might, they might have VTA come back with us, uh, giving us a lesson on near side and far side. In-lane uh bus stops, um, but uh I.
Sure.
It'll, I think it'd be worthwhile to, to have that information.
I believe so. Okay, uh, and since I didn't make any um comments or ask questions the first time around. You know, I, 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 I do want to make a few comments on the overall project. Um, and the, the conformance of the um, the final map here. Uh, I, you know, I think substantively, we're, we're fine. There, there are these two follow-ups. Um, you, you know, with regard to the financing element of it, I, I, I link it to the nature of this project right now. And I do want to remind everyone that this started out as very much uh an office project. That uh had a fairly significant amount of height next to Highway eighty-five. It had an imbalance between jobs and housing. And, you know, we've gone through a number of iterations here. Um, I'm really happy that it is now a housing project. It, it's a housing project in a particular area of housing that we sorely need. Uh, there are many people aging in place in Cupertino, uh, as uh most of my colleagues uh on council. And I have seen in just this last week, uh, we have a limited number of um retirement uh facilities in Cupertino. We've gone to two-thirds of them. You know, we went over to uh the forum to help them celebrate their thirtieth anniversary last week. The next day, uh, on Veterans Day, we went over to um Sunny View. And that really comprises the, the majority of the units. Um, the other, the other location is right near City Hall here, Chateau Cupertino. Uh, wh- which, you, you know, is um, i- i- is a different type of facility, but at the same time. Um, if you add these three, uh, i- i- it's really not a, a great deal of inventory. So um, you know, I, I look at it through that lens and, you know, when I look at the uh various federal requirements. Um, and I weigh them against the BMR manual. Yes, I do think, just like I think it's a good idea, you know, when we spend so much time and effort. Considering a general plan to try to adhere to it. I also think that a, a BMR manual is made for a reason. But when I look at the totality of the circumstances and how there's um a good faith effort to try to meet the needs of the community. Um, I, I, I'd put some um credence in, 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 into that notion. And also, I, I don't think that we're going to be running too far um the field from our own BMR requirements. Um, I, I, I feel confident that um following federal guidelines for, you know, potential uh funds that. We're, we're, i- i- it's not like, it's not going to be the difference between night and day in terms of the requirements for uh affordability. So, you know, for those reasons, I am um, I, I'm encouraging of this project overall. And then finally, you know, yes, there is a bit of a delay in the parkland dedication in Lou fees, but, you know, as we sit right now, it's November sixteenth. We're talking about a month and a half from right now. So I, I, I don't, I didn't hear any other comments to uh the contrary there. But I, I do just want to remind people, we're talking about calendar year two thousand twenty-one, not, not another year that we're talking um with regard to a delay for these in Lou fees. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to thank Katie Urban to, for pushing to make this finally happen. I am so looking forward for Cupertino to. Finally have a major development project um to be built, not just approved. And, and I, I think we want to address community concerns, but then I am happy to uh see this project going through. So thank you, Mark Terzini, for making that happen. And I would like to uh comment a little about the movement of bus. Uh, I think I second the mayor's request for, for another look at, at safety because. It's not only seniors. My kids used to take the bus there to play tennis in Memorial Park. And then you have students going to the Anza who use that bus stop. So it, and it's not a which, it's not which for Cupertino are we favoring new residents or existing ones. It's just, we are making a change. So we want to make sure the existing users are going to be, have, continue to have safety when they take bus. So, yeah. Um, so thank you for looking into that and thank you for already installing a protected pedestrian crosswalk there. So, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. I don't see further hands raised at this time. Uh, we have a, a motion on the table and a second. Did anyone else from council want to make? Uh, comments prior to conducting a vote? Okay, seeing, seeing none, no hands, I would like to ask our uh city clerk, Madam City Clerk. Would you please conduct the roll call vote for the motion on the table?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And now we're on to item number eighteen, having postponed item number seventeen. Uh, in accordance to how we described under postponements. The subject of number uh eighteen is the consideration of conducting a first reading of an ordinance to make minor and technical corrections to the Cupertino municipal code. I will not read the code sections, but we do have our city attorney, Chris Jensen, uh, with a presentation. Uh, with regard to the specifics of the changes being proposed here tonight. Chris, welcome, or take it away, I guess.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, let me uh start my, I try to get into slideshow mode. Uh, are you seeing the, my screen in slideshow mode now?
No.
Well, we are not.
No, that's what I was afraid of. Okay, let me see if I can do this differently.
We are seeing your screen, so uh, there, there is um. You know, pretty, pretty good clarity with regard to the content of the slides.
Okay, well, I'm just going to walk through them if, if, to save time. It's a, it'll, it's a brief presentation. Um, and just to provide context, this is a process that I understand that the city uh routinely goes through every year. I think it's a good process that I'd like to continue. Uh, it's just, and it is, it, as it says, it's to clean up. Uh, minor errors and outdated code sections. And the intent is really be here to address things that. Uh, where there is going to only be limited uh policy input required from council and members of the community. Um, and um, a- and um, after soliciting uh suggestions from uh the various city departments. We've come up with a list of things that we are asking council to consider this evening, and I'll just run through those really quickly and take questions. So. Uh, the first is, is to standardize the schedule of fines for certain code violations that are not um on our standard schedule, fine schedule. Um, standardizing language for reimbursement of commissioner expenses, uh, to allow for uh expensive commissioner expenses to be reimbursed. Uh, with the approval of the city manager. Uh, there's uh language in different uh sections of the code that's inconsistent. And so the goal is to make it consistent. Uh, chapter two-point-four-eight, which lays out uh the responsibilities of city departments. Uh, the Department of Innovation and Technology is currently missing from that section. And so these amendments would uh include our very important IT department. Uh, moving on, uh, the uh, the, the, the chapter of the code. Um, uh, chartering the Technology Information and Communication Commission currently requires. A representative of the Community College District to attend those meetings. Uh, that is inconsistent with our current practice, so that requirement's being removed. Uh, we also added a, a, a new chapter of, of, of the code that allows. A remote meetings during declared states of emergency, such as the one that we're having tonight, uh, so conforms to code, code to recent changes in state law. Uh, we, uh, also, um, in response to uh evolving situations in our, you know, our experience in the pandemic. Uh, we are revising uh the uh provisions for the Public Works Contract to support uh electronic bid procedures. Uh, that we have developed and are using in response to the pandemic. Uh, uh, finally, uh, we are, uh, we are consistent with our general practice. Allowing a fee for keeping a dangerous animal to be set by resolution. Uh, we're proposing to eliminate uh licensing and registration requirements for bicycles, uh, which is consistent with what uh many other states. Uh, have done, had to make those requirements voluntary rather than mandatory. Um, correct, um, just non-complac-, non-nomenclature references to the Department of Community Development and Plan Division. And finding minor changes to our chapters dealing with uh flood protection. To comply with uh changes to FEMA regulations, uh, proactively getting ahead of, of, of regulations that we'll have to comply with in a few years. So that is what is for council and, and so uh the staff recommendation is to conduct the first reading of the ordinance to update the municipal code as outlined. And uh I am here uh to answer questions as well as um as staff from the various departments that have um requested some of these changes.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Let me take this to the members of the public before we bring this back to council. I don't see any hands raised from the public at this point. Uh, Peggy Griffin, welcome. Your hand is raised. And so I'll remind the members of the public uh that Peggy will have up to three minutes to speak. Uh, by the time Peggy is done speaking, you'll need to have your hands raised in order to be called upon for this item. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, uh, Vice Mayor Chow, council members and staff. All I want to say is it is so nice to have our own city attorney. I, I, it adds a level of trust and consistency. And I thank you, all of you. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Peggy. And um you win the award for brevity of comment tonight and you can redeem that later. Um, I'm sure I'll give you a nice cup of coffee or something. So thank you. Uh, let, let me bring this back to um council and are there any questions with regard to item number eighteen? Of our city attorney. Um, I see Councilmember Moore with a hand raised. Councilmember Moore?
Um, thank you for, for finding the bike permit, uh, one. Uh, that one was a little, little unusual. Um, I am looking at uh the park uh section. And I would like i- if you have some time in the future for, I guess for next year's, if thirteen-point-zero-four-one-two-zero-b. Um, could be addressed uh at some point and, and once you get to it, you'll, you'll see what uh. Uh, could be the problem there. Uh, but overall, I'm, I'm really excited about uh seeing these changes and, and uh. There may be some more in the future that um, that we need to, to look at um for, for various reasons. But did you pull it up to, to?
I, I haven't looked at it yet and I, I don't feel it from memory, so.
Um, well, okay, well, I, I'm not sure with regards to uh some of our access changes that have happened. But we have like no person over the age of six shall, shall use restrooms and washrooms designed for the opposite sex for inner parks. And I think we might have um, uh, I, I don't think our restrooms are designated um that way now. Um, so that might be something that needs to be modified in the future to uh keep with the times. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's an ongoing process to keep the code up to date. Um, and that, thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next we have Vice Mayor Chow, followed by Councilmember Wei.
Thank you. Hi, thank you for doing the, doing the annual cleanup. So end of last year, I was going through all the municipal code for the different commissions. And I find out there are a lot of inconsistencies, maybe because they were a- added at different times. So I sent a series of emails to this former city manager, Deb Finn. With detailed comments on where they are inconsistent. Did you ever get those?
So, so I, I. So I, 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 I did and, and, and we're addressing the inconsistencies with the compensation for expenses here. Um, some of the other inconsistencies, you know, there, there are slight differences in. For example, the composition, who's allowed to serve on the, the, the commissions. Except, you know, there's a fine line between what I'm trying to do here, which is really just clean up inconsistencies and things that require uh policy decisions by council. Particularly if, uh, you know, you know, there is an initiative to look at the council commissions more broadly. And, and so I think if there, there are tweaks to the membership requirements or other requirements for certain commissions. I, I would recommend looking at it, at it in the context of that process. Um, you know, rather than a- as this, this process, which is really, you know, as I said at the outset, really. I'm really trying to focus on things where I don't think there's going to be a lot of policy dispute.
Some, some of those are just the same thing, but they are under different title for different commission. So it's a little hard to correspond to them. So it's a minor inconsistency. So as long as you have those emails in that's good, I don't have to find them.
Great. Uh, Greg, you have your hand raised. Did you want to make a quick staff comment before we go on to Councilmember Wei?
Yes, we did defer the commissions and committee items from tonight to three weeks from tonight. Thinking that this was going to be an even fuller agenda. So um, I will see if we can make sure to pull some of that in to that report to get council policy direction. So for instance, clear instruction, what the council wants to do. Because tonight is to be the simpler things that don't require much discussion.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, Councilmember Wei, I uh thank you for your patience. Did you still want to say something? I, I noticed you lowered your hand.
Yeah, no, I just want to actually echo the comment from the public that it's really nice to have an in-house security.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, and I'm sure that um, well, I'm sure that majority agrees, because I, I agree, I'm sure. Uh, I'm, I'm almost equally certain that everyone on council uh agrees with that sentiment. Um, Madam City Clerk, at this point, would you please conduct the first uh reading of ordinance number two-one-dash-two-two-three-four?
This is the first reading of ordinance number two-one-dash-two-two-three-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino. To update the municipal code to improve city operations and bring this Cupertino municipal code up to date by one, enacting new sections two-point-three-six-point-zero-eight-five. And two-point-seven-four-point-zero-seven-five, and new chapter two-point-one-one-zero-two, amending sections one-point-one-two-point-zero-one-zero. Two-point-four-eight-point-zero-two-zero, two-point-six-zero-point-zero-five-zero, two-point-six-eight-point-zero-five-zero. Two-point-seven-four-point-zero-four-zero, two-point-eight-zero-point-zero-nine-zero, two-point-eight-six-point-zero-seven-zero. Two-point-nine-two-point-zero-nine-zero, three-point-two-three-point-zero-six-zero, eight-point-zero-six-point-zero-three-zero. One, fourteen-point-zero-four-point-one-two-five, fourteen-point-one-eight-point-zero-nine-zero, sixteen-point-five-two-point-zero-four-three. Sixteen-point-five-two-point-zero-five-three, eighteen-point-zero-four-point-zero-two-zero, nineteen-point-one-zero-two and. Zero-three-point-zero-three-zero. And nineteen-point-one-zero-four-point-two-two-zero, and table nineteen-point-one-two-four-point-zero-four-zero. And three, repealing section eleven-point-zero-eight-point-zero-two-zero.
Right, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. We won't make you do that uh again. And uh, would anyone on council like to uh move that? The council conduct the first reading, reading of ordinance number two-one-dash-two-two-three-four and that. Our city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof. Councilmember Wei?
So moved and that this subject, uh, this project is not subject to CECL.
Okay, would anyone like to second Councilmember Wei's motion? Vice Mayor Chow?
Okay.
Very good. Are there any further comments on this item before we conduct a vote? Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct that roll call vote?
Uh, Councilmember Warren?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Thank you, colleagues. Um, at this point, I will go back to our uh oral communications. Um, we are at the continuation uh portion of uh oral communications on our agenda. And so I'll go ahead and read off the names that are remaining on my list uh of people that had their. And so I'll go ahead and read off the names that are remaining on my list of people that had their hand raised once our first speaker there was concluded. They are again Kent Chang, Randy Shingai, Zi Yu He, Chris Rattana, Leon Zhu, Flora H. Dave, Saohua Yang, Wei, Ajian Li, Sudhakasim Sethi, Jay, Su Juen, Jenny Zhao, and Vera. And so if members of the public, if you heard your name and would still like to speak on oral communications, I will be going through this list in the order that I read the names and calling on people accordingly. So we have two members of the public with hands raised, Leon Zhu and Ajian Li. And now we have Randy Shingai. I believe that Randy was first in this order. And so Randy, welcome. And you'll have the two minutes that we provided the rest of the members of the public in the interest of fairness to our previous speakers.
Hi. Do any of you remember Vincent Chin? In 1982, Vincent Chin was bludgeoned to death with a baseball bat in Detroit. The two men responsible pled guilty to second-degree murder. Each received a $3,000 fine, but no jail time. Vincent Chin died because he was mistaken for Japanese, and Japanese at the time were blamed for Detroit's problems. The judge that sentenced the two killers defended his decision by saying, "These aren't the kind of men you send to jail. And I just didn't think that putting him in prison would do any good for them or for society." We're now in a period where anti-Asian sentiment is being driven by relations with China. People of color are not monolithic. Each group has its own interests, but work together with other groups when there is common ground. Asian Americans will need all the help we can get to fight anti-Asian violence. But Ms. Chow's words throw other groups under the bus while at the same time airing grievances about the unfair treatment of just her own group. Where's the common ground? People outside the Asian-American community are likely to think that Ms. Chow represents the views of Chinese-Americans and by extension, the larger Asian-American community. She does not represent me as an Asian American. I wrote to you earlier that I do not think that Ms. Chow should be the next mayor. I have not changed my mind. Oh, and by the way, my comments are based on documents that Ms. Chow sent me.
15 seconds.
Thank you, Randy. Our next speaker is Leon Zhu. Welcome, Leon.
Hi, my name is Leon Zhu. I would like to thank Vice Mayor Chow for her excellent work, both in CUSD Board member a few years ago and also in Cupertino Council now. We support Liang Fang Chow because she contributed a lot for Cupertino community, especially for Chinese and Taiwanese Americans living in this great city. Another thing I want to mention is, as you know, the CUSD Board made a... Recently, CUSD Board made use of this low enrollment in pandemic time and closely neighborhood school. This decision will cause more traffic congestion and more overcrowries in school campuses. Some of our elementary school could have 600, 700, or even 800 students. It will get worse when the CUSD provide free pre-K for four-years-old children next school year. So their decision will lower the education quality in Cupertino, and it will destroy the brand name of Cupertino, that is the education quality. So please, please let the school board know that it's a wrong decision to close school now. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Leon. Our next speaker is Saohua Yang. Welcome. Saohua, I believe you are unmuted and you can speak. We are not hearing anything, and so it is possible you may be experiencing some technical difficulties. I will call on the next speaker on this list. And if you need to reset Saohua, I'll call on you if you are raising your hand by the time we conclude. The other people that I see with their hands raised now that were in our original list of oral communications are Ajian Li and Vera. And so we'll go to Ajian next. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Ajian Li, and I'm an educational foundation founder for 10 years. And I want to speak out for Ms. Zhao. During my experience work with Ms. Zhao, she is working hard and is really faithful, always try her best to support the community and for all those people in needs, especially poor family and the, I mean, kids, you know, left behind. So during the school closure process, we got a lot of support from Ms. Zhao. So during the issue about the cyber bully to Ms. Zhao, we feel sorry about that. And we disagree that those people who say they are the Asian community leaders, you know, they ask for, apologize for what she said. I think this is truly, you know, they chop what Ms. Liang said and put their own words to Ms. Zhao's mouth. So this is really, you know, ridiculous. And I don't think these people, like Yidin, like Alice Lee, like Gilbert Wong, they are not, you know, represent our Asian communities. They should apologize to Ms. Zhao about what they say and what they did. This is a truly bully. This is a truly bully. Thank you.
Thank you, Ajian. Our next and final speaker is Vera. Welcome, Vera. And Vera, I do see Saohua Yang also is still here. Sudhakasim Sethi has raised her hand. And so Saohua, you're still under an unmute, and so we can't... Yes, welcome. Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Saohua, and I'm here just to speak for an event just happened recently. A previous mayor of Cupertino City, Mr. Gilbert Wong and a few other folks, launched a disinformation campaign based on false information against another Cupertino city public servant, Ms. Liang Chow. Mr. Gilbert Wong made a false accusation that Ms. Liang Chow defended the Chinese Exclusion Act. As a member of the Google Group, where Mr. Gilbert Wong claimed that he obtained such information from, I am certain that Mr. Gilbert Wong fabricated such information. Ms. Liang Chow and some of us discussed how the Chinese Exclusion Act was campaigned for by the Progressive Workingmen's Party in California in the 1870s, before it was eventually signed into law in 1882. We discussed the perspectives of what actually happened and how this history was described in the California Ethnic Studies model curriculum. Our CUSD parent, Google Group, has around 2,000 members. Mr. Gilbert Wong was the only one of very few people, seemingly two, including Mr. Gilbert Wong and Mr. Yidin. We did not have anyone in the 2,000 people group who had similar false accusation. The CUSD parent, Google Group administrators, later unanimously voted to evict both Mr. Gilbert Wong and Mr. Yidin. The CUSD parent, Google Group, is made of significant number of Chinese, Indian, and people of other races. We cherish...
Saohua, that's your time. We will go to Sudhakasim Sethi. She has her hand raised and was in the order read at the initial oral communications. And I believe that Sudha will be our last person speaking this evening on oral communications. Welcome, Sudha.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Sudha Kasim Sethi. I'm a Cupertino resident, and I'm representing myself. I've known her Vice Mayor Liang Chow for the past two and a half years. She's very active in discussion groups that I'm also part of. I've seen her responding on several issues very passionately and with thorough research, including data and statistics that, you know, putting all the find that she does. I've always found her very honest in her opinions and approach. She's straightforward and very balanced. I think, and I'm pretty sure, our community is very smart, and I request everyone to read her whole response. I'm not going to reiterate the issue, but I really request the community to read her whole response, just not few lines that were posted out of context in social media. I have read the whole thread multiple times and never found any bad or racist comments. I even showed it to some of my Chinese friends to confirm, and they were pretty shocked to see some of the personal attacks that were coming towards her. Whether you agree or not with her opinion, I feel very sad about the personal attacks that she's going through. This is one community, and Cupertino has great history behind it. It's high time we put aside our differences and start working together. And whoever is attacking, if you think this will silence her, you're only empowering Mrs. Chow. Her work speaks for itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sudha. I had not scrolled up. I see that Vera still has her hand raised. Vera, welcome. You truly will be the last person on oral communications, as you're the last person on this list. Welcome, Vera.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Yeah, my name is Vera, and I'm here to support Vice Mayor Liang Chow. So we all know Chinese community did a lot and contributed a lot in US history, and we should all be proud of this, but not use it as a topic to manipulate and attack people who didn't say and mean something. So we all know the past tragic event, and the discrimination happened to Asian-Americans, which is still happening even now. But the fact is, Vice Mayor Chow never said CEA is not racism. And this has been deliberately misconstrued. So people nowadays like to use racist to be a big cap, to try to attack people who does not follow what they thought, and try to achieve their own goal and their own purpose. In fact, Ms. Chow is against all forms of racism. So instead, she is the real caring person. So she tried her big effort to communicate with so many parents to try to address their concern about the school resource, about safety concern, about the radical sex education and CRT, which all these things people think goes to the wrong direction. So we actually, so for those kind of attack, it is not a new thing to us. We all know that from our own history, and we've experienced those kind of tragic stuff. So please stop those kind of attack and put your heart and effort on things your citizen really concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. And that concludes oral communications. Thank you to our members of the public, and we appreciate our staff and various consultants serving the city of Cupertino as well. We had a very packed agenda. There were a couple of items that did get moved off. The postponement on item number 17, namely, I think was going to recruit a fair amount of commentary from the public. But now we are at the end of our main portion of the agenda for tonight. Before we adjourn, we have council and staff comments and future agenda items. However, I would like to ask, to see if any members of the council would like to go ahead. I saw a couple of hands raised from the public at the oral communications. Is there an appetite to perhaps open it up for another five to 10 minutes so that the residual people, you know, given the fact that we're just past 10:30, would like to speak to our city council? Vice Mayor Chow, I see you have your hand raised, but did you have your hand raised for city council and staff comments? Or for, I guess you couldn't have anticipated this, but would you be willing to provide another few minutes in case members of the public would like to speak?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I was going to comment on future agenda items.
You were? Okay. Anyone else? I would like to get some consensus. But I see Councilmember Willie is nodding his head. Councilmember Way is nodding his head. Okay. You know, I'll go forward with this, but just with the understanding that we will stick in the future to the notion that at the beginning of our meetings is oral communications. If you have your hand raised by the time we, you know, have our first speaker done, then that basically puts you on the list. But given our extra time now and the apparent appetite from some members of the community to speak, we'll go ahead and open it up. But I don't see anyone with their hand raised. Neil Park McClintock and San R. Those are a couple of the hands that were raised intermittently. And so Neil and San, you'll both have two minutes each. Welcome, Neil.
Hi, my name is Neil Park McClintock. I am the president of Cupertino for All. And I just wanted to share some thoughts today about everything that's gone down. I first want to contextualize that, you know, nobody can possibly account for every single person that supports their group or their ideals and what they say. But myself and several others have been called some pretty disgusting stuff online, such as that we're demons. So I just wanted to bring that up first. I think it's very unnecessary, and I do believe that the attacks just don't match the criticism that we've engaged in. We directly quoted you, Vice Mayor Chow. I'm going to read out your quote. "The Chinese Act was not even based on race. It was really a labor issue, where American laborers wished to keep cheaper Chinese laborers out for good reason. Please explain this context to me, because there is no context that justifies those exact words. And so when you tell us that you did not say that, that's called gaslighting. Gaslighting is when you convince someone that they're crazy or that they're wrong. But those are your words. They are a direct quote. I respect that you don't actually feel that way, and I'm glad. You know, the Chinese Exclusion Act is racist, and so we can move on. But you did say those words, and I believe you should take accountability for them and be more careful in the future, and be honest about what you've said as well."
15 seconds.
Yeah, those are direct quotes. So there is no context. The context doesn't justify what you said. You said there was good reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Our next and final speaker is San R. Welcome, San.
Thank you for allowing a final round of comments. I would like to bring to the top of mind of the city council issues that are pressing for residents. Residents that have moved to the city of Cupertino do so for good schooling. Good schooling is something that requires cooperation between the city council and CUSD. CUSD has made a number of decisions in haste recently, including closing schools without adequate traffic study, as well as the impact on enrollment at a time when people are working remotely due to the requirement to not have to be close to their offices. As we know, the Apple campus is not currently staffed. A number of employees are not required to be close to campus, and we do not know the state of enrollment once the campus reopens. I request the city council to please pay more attention to the matters of CUSD as it directly affects the state of reputation of the city of Cupertino as a magnet for good education and schooling. I request the city council to look into the issues around traffic, particularly on Bub. With the closure of Recknard, traffic on Bub in the mornings is going to be a major concern. I also want to bring to the attention of the city council increasing amount of graffiti on freeway signage, such as the exit onto Stevens Creek from AD onto Stevens Creek from eighty-five northbound. It appears some of that vandalism is happening repeatedly. Despite cleanup, it has happened again. So I request the city council to please extend your attention to matters involving the county in the matter of freeways and graffiti as well as the school district in the matter of school closures and kindly bring some of those items to future agendas. Thank you for all the work you do and I would like to conclude by saying a word of support for Vice Mayor Liang Chow and her efforts for common sense and pro-urban policies.
Thank you, San. Appreciate it. We are now, uh, at the end of our, uh, agenda. This is, uh, once again, city council and staff comments and future agenda items. Greg, was, was there anything from staff that you wanted to share at this point?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Just three quick comments. Uh, having been on the other side of the table, I just wanted to congratulate the council on your appointment of the city manager tonight. You ran an excellent process. You had an excellent pool and you selected a great city manager, I believe. Somebody I had the time to spend a couple hours with uh, this week and I know I'll be spending much more time with before he starts January third and possibly even after. I also did want to acknowledge that, uh, your next meeting on December seventh is going to be a very, very full agenda. It will also be my last meeting as your interim city manager and I just wanted to say now what a joy it's been to work for this city as I'm sure that your, uh, new city manager will feel as well. And in particular, I wanted to throw a big thanks out to the council, both for the Valco meeting as well as tonight's meeting, which was a very full agenda. We received extensive city council comments and questions in advance that your staff worked really hard on Monday to respond to in supplemental reports and to incorporate that information into the presentations. And because you got us those questions and comments early, I think we were able to answer them in advance, not just for you, but for the public as well, which made tonight's meeting go much better. And that's exactly what we saw in the Valco meeting. So I just wanted to encourage you to do that, particularly on full agendas for the seventh, but also for your new city manager. It will just make it a lot easier for him to have staff respond to yours and the public's questions and concerns if the questions are turned in in advance rather than trying to wing it at a council meeting. And it's also better for the public process to have all the information part of the public record so everybody knows it. So thank you very much for your excellent supportive staff tonight.
Uh, thank you, Greg, and thank you for your support of our council and public in your months here. Uh, although we can't, uh, give you your swan song yet, you are committed to at least one more, uh, regularly scheduled meeting with us. Um, so, uh, I, I did see, uh, Director Lee had his hand raised very briefly. Uh, Roger, was that inadvertent or did you want to, uh, say something that was just?
That, that was inadvertent here.
Okay, okay, very good. All right. Uh, well, thank you, Greg, and we'll go on to council, uh, Vice Mayor Chow. I won't put people on a timer, but I'll just remind that we're kind of committing to a couple of minutes each for these items.
I wonder if we can first get an update on the gra- graffiti near freeway exits?
Okay, I, I think that's fine. Uh, a- as long as it's not a back and forth and, uh, and Greg or staff feels, uh, prepared to provide that update.
So for freeway signage, if it's on the green state signs, all we can really do is refer it to the state Caltrans, which we will do. I noted that. If it's something different, we can follow up if it's in city limits and on public property. And if it's on private property, we can alert the property owners and provide support to their graffiti abatement. So I did note the public comment, Vice Mayor, and I will follow up.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Vice Mayor.
So for, uh, agenda items, I remember, um, Angela Twai, um, was attending the Chamber Legislative Action Committee meeting monthly. And in those meetings, she provided a monthly development activity report that give an update of all the different activities and those were really nice. And I wonder if the new economicus, um, development manager might be planning to do the same thing and I hope to get a copy of those report. And then, uh, one community member asked for an update on Valco. I'm wondering, maybe we should also provide like a quarterly more detailed update on Valco project because that's a continued interest of the community and post that on the website. And, uh, another item is, um, what I mentioned, uh, a potential, um, land purchase for affordable housing or moderate income housing for maybe for ease for teachers. I think I forwarded an email to Greg, um, a land leader, which is a company that provides down payment assistance to city staff. And, uh, I wonder if we could explore that also, um. And, yeah, I, I think one of the item that was Housing Commission requested was give to, to allow them to help us seek for sites. But it wasn't a high agenda item, so I don't, I don't remember if, if we meant on the work program or not. Maybe it's something to consider. Now we have a little extra fund, um, from, um, last year. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Uh, you're, uh, a bit past the allocation. Um, and let's go ahead and go on to Councilmember Moore.
Hey, um, thank you. So during the Public Safety Forum, there was a presentation by Captain Urina and it, he talked about, uh, the crime, uh, kind of year over year, uh, how things were going and it was a, it was a really good PowerPoint presentation and I'm hoping that that could be uh, brought to us, uh, and, uh, you know, put out for the public to know because when you look at the items of interest attachment, um, you'll, at the, at the end, you'll have the, um, the sheriff's report, but it's difficult to gauge, you know, how things are going year over year. And I thought his report was really a, a good one and it summarized things as well. But, um, also, if you go to items of interest and the, in the attachments, um, we have the upcoming draft agenda items and some of these have been repeated. We, we suggested items maybe a couple of years ago, then the same item gets suggested again. And I was wondering if it would be worth our while to just have the upcoming agenda items come up, uh, as a, like a report to us where we can take a look at all these items that we've, uh, got stacked in here, um, coming down the pipes and, and see, there, there could be some that we actually want to drop off even. Um, so I was wondering if, since it's a, a growing list, um, if that's something we might have an appetite for, uh, taking a review of and reminding ourselves all of the things that we've requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Next, we have Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, just a, a couple of comments, you know, I mean, uh, I, I was pleasantly, uh, happy to, to hear our, uh, new city manager say that he knows the reputation of Cupertino and it's a very good reputation. And we heard that from a few others tonight. This city council, I think, is really serving the community in just a fantastic way. I am proud to be on this council with Vice Mayor Chow, with Mayor Paul, Councilman Moore, Councilman Wei. Kudos to this community and to what we have here. And I'll leave it at that. Let everybody kind of think about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Well, uh, Councilmember Wei, did you want to make any comments at this point? Uh, I'll just wrap if not. Um, well. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Um, well, I did want to thank my, my colleagues for a, a very vigorous process for arriving at our, uh, our new city manager selection. Uh, I'm really glad that we managed to, um, seal the deal, so to speak, this evening. Um, but, but truly, you know, it, it was a very vigorous process and, um, you know, I, I, I think, let, let, let me just let members of the public know. I think one, one night we were there until past midnight, actually. Uh, that was, that was the, uh, the day we had the Diwali festival. We actually continued the discussion. We had another more than four hours plus, um, after we continued it on the same day. Uh, and it wasn't over at that point. Uh, it, it was well worth the effort. Um, you know, thank you very much for the great support from, from, from the council and, uh, you know, I, I think the public is really going to, um, you know, take to our new selection. And a- after all is said and done, you know, everything that we see in, in this distillation of a process from the public, um, you know, I, I don't think we need to or should cast any aspersions. I, 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 I think that kind of happens a- a- as a byproduct of, um, public discourse irrespective, right? Because we're human beings after all. Um, but, but truly, you know, I'll, I'll echo Councilmember Willie's sentiments that I'm very proud to serve, uh, this community with the colleagues that we have, uh, with our, with our, with our city staff and, um, you know, the engaged residents and, um, members of the uh, local and regional community. So, so thank you very much. Um, you know, my theme here has been gratitude and opportunity and I hope that we've uh, collectively demonstrated what that means over the course of this year. Um, and with that, I will bid everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and we will see you again at our next regularly scheduled council meeting of the Cupertino City Council on December seventh at six forty-five PM. Thanks very much, everyone, and meeting adjourned.